Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, November tenth Finley City School Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Aldridge?
Here.
Mr. Cooper? Ms. Iyer?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Dr. Sebanola Wilson?
Here.
Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Safety briefing is out the door, you came in to the left and out the front door if we would need to exit. Okay. Uh, Andy, up for the welcome?
Yeah, uh, good evening board, this evening we have our welcome from Chamberlain Hill and Mrs. Zachesky is going to bring up her guests.
Alright, so I probably overthought this to start with and I was like racking my brain on what do I want to share, what do I want to share? Um, what direction do I want to go? And then I really thought, what's most important? And right here is what's most important.
Absolutely.
So, our Chamberlain students are going to share what was most special or their favorite thing about Chamberlain Hill. So, we'll start with Nadia.
My name is Nadia, I'm in fourth grade. One thing I love about Chamberlain Hill is earning Trojan tokens for being respectful, being responsible, and being safe. When we learn, when we earn tokens, we enter them into weekly drawings for prizes like positive phone calls home, Maker's Club with Mrs. Wise, a ticket to an FCS game, or a book token. We can, we also get rewards at the end of the month depending on how many tokens we earn. This month, we can earn the privilege of chewing gum, getting a chrome book. I was proud to be a part of the tradition that has been at Chamberlain Hill for twenty-eight years. It meant a lot to see so many families and the many members come, come together to celebrate.
Thank you so much. Great to hear from you guys and all the things that you love about your school. So, thank you for coming.
Uh, yeah, so, um, you're all, the students that just shared are always welcome and their families are welcome to stay for the entire meeting. Or if you want to go celebrate your presentation, you can, you can head out anytime. Don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting.
Okay, we're gonna move on, uh, I need a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
So, move. Second.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Sebanola Wilson?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the draft minutes from the regular meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Sebanola Wilson?
Aye.
We'll move to superintendent reports and celebrations.
Yeah, before, uh, one thing I'd like to celebrate is just kind of piggybacking off of the wonderful welcome that we just heard from Chamberlain Hill and a, a big shout out to Chamberlain Hill, their staff, Mrs. Zachesky, um, for another wonderful Veterans Day, uh, program on Friday. Uh, thank you for continuing that tradition, there are so many veterans that are so thankful. I, you know, was able to talk to some, uh, parents that have been coming for over twenty years to that very celebration. So, again, very well done, um, and I wanted to thank Dr. Sebanola Wilson for being one of the keynotes, the welcome that day. Thank you very much for, for doing that on Friday. And, and with that, uh, the, the celebration and the guests that we have here tonight to speak, uh, to the board and address the board and give some updates are the Jefferson-Chamberlain PTO, so if they would come up at this time and share, that would be wonderful.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. We are the officers of the Jefferson-Chamberlain Hill PTO. To introduce us, I'm Ashley Hughes, I'm the president, I have twin boys and Jefferson. Nathan is our vice president, he was not able to make it because he's on a flight right now.
Okay.
He went back from Florida, we're all jealous.
Uh, my name is Lindsay Perry, I'm a secretary and I have a five-year-old daughter, uh, or fifth grader daughter at, uh, Chamberlain Hill.
Wonderful.
I'm the treasurer, my name's Susan Harman and I have a fourth grade, no, third grader at Chamberlain Hill and he just read, um...
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Ready for the season, yep.
Yep, so we went through the officers, some of the event highlights that we have going on is we participated in the homecoming parade, we created a float and we had probably about forty or fifty students come out and walk with us and hand out candy. Uh, we also had our first family movie night, we did it on Halloween, we watched Hotel Transylvania. We had about a hundred and twenty-five, um, participants.
Geez.
Wow.
That's wonderful. Uh, so far for fundraising, our big fundraiser was our fall pumpkin sales. Um, we raised over four thousand dollars during that sale. And then we also are doing spirit nights every month, every month we have teamed up with a different local business and our first one was October with Chick-fil-A and we raised two hundred and thirty-five with that. Uh, we have a staff appreciation committee made up of about six or seven members. At the beginning of the year, we voted to do a staff appreciation for their own, like, special day rather than just one big group one at the end of the year. So, pictured are the custodian gifts that we did, little trash cans for them with gift card and little goodies. Um, we also are doing the holiday appreciation gifts. So, for Halloween, we did little food, like, Cuban food and had candy in it. Uh, we have some stuff coming up for Thanksgiving and Christmas that we'll be doing. Some of our student impact in our budget, we have wines allocated for every grade level. We allocate three hundred and that goes towards funding their field trips. And we also just approved the grant proposal for the school libraries, we're hoping that passes and we are able to, uh, keep doing that. And then, looking forward, we have some more events planned, we have Santa coming next month and we're gonna be doing cookies and hot chocolate with them. Uh, we're gonna have a Christmas family movie night, we'll do a poll on Facebook and see what movie our kids want to watch. We're doing a Disney trivia night, we've teamed up with the Toledo Walleye and Mud Hens to do some spirit nights. We got discounted tickets with reserved seats in one section. We also will be doing a glow dance for the boys and girls and the end of the school year bash with inflatables and just a lot of fun for the kids. We also have our list of the restaurants that we are teaming up with for the remainder of the school year, those spirit night fundraisers that I mentioned.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you so much. As always, I want to thank you all for everything that you do to support Chamberlain and, and Jefferson and for parents like you that step up to be part of district support organizations and to really show appreciation for our staff and, uh, I love the intentionality and the organization around it, thank you for all you do, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Uh, okay, board, I only have two items under, uh, reports here for this evening. I'm gonna start with the, uh, later in the agenda, I just wanted to highlight the proposed school year calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven. The, did receive, this is still being built and based on the large survey that went out to staff, uh, the community and students a year ago. We'll do another one for the twenty-seven, uh, twenty-eight calendar and beyond. The one that I'm proposing this evening is very similar to this year's calendar uh, in terms of like the start date, is there that second full week of August? And one of the reasons for that is just again to remind everyone that we want to get in the first semester prior to the winter break so that especially our high school students can wrap up their projects, their exams, all of that and have the first semester cleanly done before they go home on that break so that everyone, including staff, can, uh, really focus just on family time and not have to return in January, uh, to exams. The, the other thing that is very similar in this proposal tonight, um, is there will still be a fall break at the end of the first term, which we had this year, that again was based on the feedback from staff and students. And then, uh, the Thanksgiving break again would, is, uh, three days during the week and then the two-day weekend, but it is not a full five days off that week with two weekends on either end of it. The, the Monday and Tuesday of the, uh, that November shifts to spring break so that we can have the five days at a, at a spring break in, in the spring. Um, the school year would again continue to, uh, conclude before Memorial Day, which is very similar to this year, so. Any questions about the calendar? Again, I intend to put out, um, at some point, uh, next school year, another survey to the community, the staff, the students so that we are capturing voice on designing those, um, moving forward. All right, I would also like to provide the board this evening, um, an update on the transportation enhancement plan. And just, uh, this is a big checkpoint being that it is November and that January is around the corner. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to update the board on the transportation plan this evening. There will be two components to this update with the first on enhancements to our current level of service and the second, the progress we are making towards the goals outlined by the board that stemmed from our work session on September fifth of twenty twenty-five. So, the first piece, enhancing our current, uh, level of services. Last month, we were able to hire, uh, which was in our plan and in our budget, our forecast, we hired our transportation manager, Ms. Bonnie Huff, who instantly has brought significant experience with our transportation, uh, software, TransFinder. Ms. Huff has been able to, um, run recent analysis on the route lengths and is working to address the longest routes with our current staffing levels. Um, right now, I know in speaking to her this past, uh, or sorry, last week, there was an emphasis on, uh, a couple of special needs routes that run to the high school because we do have some routes that run to the high school for special needs students and, um, those were the ones she wanted to address first in terms of the length of, uh, of ride time for those students first. Ms. Huff found efficiencies, um, also by, uh, running new routes and controlling for students who, who had not ridden the bus all year. So, if a student qualifies for the bus, of course, they can ride the bus, but we were, there's, she discovered some efficiencies with, you know, X number of students haven't ridden all year, so we might be able to adjust some of those routes to make them faster and more efficient because cer- some students just haven't ridden the bus all year. She's also been able to dive in right away and work with our dispatchers and our entire team out at the transportation department and provide real-time mentoring and coaching to improve our services. Um, so she's been an excellent addition to our team. Uh, speaking of training, that was identified as a key component of our near-term and long-term success in the transportation department when we did our deep dive, um, back in August and in early September. Asynchronous learning has been going on with on-demand learning by our dispatchers for several weeks now. Um, and Ms. Huff, in addition, out there has been tremendous. TransFinder University took place on October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and I just found out that we have another round of that planned soon. Um, so that's that, kind of that in-person or that face-to-face synchronous training that, uh, they are providing to us. Through this training, our dispatchers, um, and manager learn how to best align our data with the TransFinder program so that the program can be used most efficiently. Um, one example would be instead of manually inputting information or making unique adjustments for special circumstances, we are learning the best ways to have the program do that work. Um, so this is changing a lot of approach that we've done for years and years and years and we're gonna be more efficient, um, with this moving forward, so really pleased to report that. They also learned how to geo-code all students so that the addresses fall into a boundary for routes and stops, essentially grouping them into the most efficient way. With our manual data input, not all students were geo-coded, so routes were not as efficient as they could have been. So, we've already seen these, these instant, um, results, uh, for not only the future planning but for right now and we're cleaning up a lot of, uh, past practice. Next, I want to share where we are with staffing because it, that, that is a bucket that sort of dips its toe into the, the future enhanced services and also our current level of services. We are currently, we have twenty-four licensed regular drivers, we have one substitute driver and one driver that will be taking her test this coming Thursday and then will be ready to drive after that. We have another new driver starting tomorrow, eleven eleven, um, she's gonna be starting her training and will be in classes beginning the seventeenth. Again, a reminder from a previous update, uh, just going off my script here just for a moment, that our team under Mr. Kelly, uh, figured out ways to enhance and expedite the onboarding process of our drivers. Uh, so, really, these, these new people are gonna be existing under those new approaches so that we can get them behind the wheel safely but in an expedited manner. These new drivers will be positively impacting our winter extracurricular transportation as there will be more drivers available to accommodate the afternoon and evening trips. Since August twenty-fourth, we've had twenty-eight driver applicants and twenty-two bus aid applicants. Um, I did want to update the board on some of the things that we, we face, uh, in this, in this recent push to hire people. During our hiring push since the beginning of the school year, twenty-two candidates have been disqualified. Despite investing substantial time contacting and following up with potential hires, some simply dropped out of the process, they said, "No, thank you," um, and, and declined. But here are some examples of what we are, we are also dealing with in this push to hire drivers. We are losing some well-qualified driver candidates to more competitive offers. For example, we've lost candidates who have received offers from neighboring school districts which offer higher wages. We are also unable to compete with private sector jobs such as full-time dump truck drivers who offer salaries exceeding fifty thousand, uh, per year and year-round employment which we cannot currently match. Some candidates, even after background checks are initiated, decline due to the pay. A significant number of applicants cannot successfully obtain the required commercial driver's license, the CDL. So, unfortunately, we've had some people, we get through the process and then they, they, they go to get to that point to get the license and they are unable to obtain it. So, those are just some snapshots of those twenty-two that were disqualified over this, this most recent hiring push. Again, one of, just a mini-celebration, uh, thanks to Kayla Reiman and, and Kelly Chaney and the people out at the transportation department. We are still putting out those testimonials of our drivers, even some new ones that really enjoy being a part of Finley City Schools and our transportation department, those are out there on social media. So, if people are still looking to join a great team, check those out. Okay, now I'd like to take a little time, uh, reporting to the Board of Education on the progress toward, um, the goals that we outlined and I just want to review those for a moment that are on our, um, transportation, enhancing transportation service plan. So, we talked about these and kind of settled on these at that September fif- fifth work session earlier this year. That the goal out there is by January of twenty-six, we want to implement the following. Provide busing to K through five students who reside beyond one-mile walk radius, so going from a two-mile to a one-mile. Provide busing to students in grade six through twelve who reside beyond a two-mile walk radius. Do our best to ensure a maximum walking distance to a bus stop of no more than a quarter mile. And then maintain our current start times for all schools pre-K through twelve. So, that's kind of that, um, goal, so when I'm talking about the goals that we've outlined, um, that's what I'm talking about in terms of progress towards those goals in January. We have just concluded the GPS tablet testing, I am happy to report, um, literally wrapping that up in the last few workdays. Previously, for our location services for each bus, uh, each bus that we had in the district, we use a, a cellphone service triangulation approach, um, which is not as accurate as G, as GPS is. GPS relies on satellites, so we will be moving forward with true GPS, um, services and that, the, the service provider we are gonna be selecting is Zonar. We tested Zonar, um, dur- using their proprietary tablet as well as the tablets we currently have. We had a, um, we tested this out on one bus with the Zonar and that was the, kind of the control and then the variable was we tried our tablet, we tried the Zonar proprietary tablet. The team is recommending the installation of the Zonar tablet since everything is seamlessly integrated for the most accuracy as well as a plethora of analytics we are going to get from each bus system. We will get things like idle time, how long is the bus just idling there? Um, if we get a phone call that says, "Hey, your bus was ripping through my neighborhood at fifty-five miles an hour", within seconds, we'll be able to say, "No, we were following the speed limit." We are going to get a lot of real-time data and information that over the long term, we hope, we realize cost savings um, given the analytics that we're gonna get back. Further, and I know that this one might sound minor, but the Zonar tablets will charge on the bus while the bus is in motion. We won't have to physically, sometimes we, you know, get wrapped up in our day and we don't charge the tablet for the next day. This will be taken care of. Um, now, one thing that I do want the board to know and I want you to know that Justin Shank and the, the, um, technology team weighed in on this, but Zonar will manage the tablets because it's their proprietary tablet. So, if we have a work order that we have to put in, if we have to adjust something, if we want a little bit of a different user interface, we have to go through them. Um, I will say Ms. Huff, uh, also another thing that she brought with her, she is very familiar with Zonar and these tablets. Um, so that's another bit of experience that we're excited to have on our team that, that just sort of was serendipitous. We anticipate full installation of Zonar on our buses along with the GPS, uh, and the tablets, um, no later than late December. So, that is on track right now to have those in place. Where are we, in the second week of November, in the next six weeks or so, even controlling for the Thanksgiving break? Now, that's one piece, the other piece that's working very, uh, we are working very diligently on in the background is the rerouting of the entire district to the goal specifications, remember, and the goal specifications are what I read a moment ago. Um, we should have a draft of, uh, of possibility, uh, again, I don't want to overpromise and under-deliver, but a draft of that routing possibility by Thanksgiving. At which point, in the next, say, three weeks, we should have a better idea then of how many drivers we would need beyond what I read to you earlier, which is we have twenty-four currently. One of the things that I, uh, threw out there since I know nothing about routing a school district for busing, I throw out crazy ideas like, do we have to be completely single routed or exclusively double routed? Is there a way to hybrid this? Is there a way to differently approach special routes that are required by law? Can we look at very, and I will tell you that Mr. Kelly and Ms. Huff and the entire team are embracing that and working with TransFinder to see how might we right-size and have just, you know, we only want just enough drivers that we need to deliver, um, the level of service that our community expects. So, those drafts should be ready by Thanksgiving. I'll, obviously, all along, I'm gonna keep the, the board updated through that progress monitoring spreadsheet that I've shared with you um, and we're gonna have the next major checkpoint at your meeting in December. I'll continue with the weekly updates. Remember that when we, uh, the, the goal would be, you know, to have those drafts and have a decision that I can move forward with in December so that also, keep in mind that we have to work with our union um, to bid on routes and, and those kind of things. If we start to fall behind on the timeline of the rerouting of the district, I feel confident with the, the hardware and the software in terms of Zonar and the GPS. Uh, oh, also, taking place in real time is gonna be the training of all the drivers, especially as we onboard them to use the tablets to, you know, and that kind of thing. If we start to fall anywhere behind on the timeline of the actual rerouting of the district, which is gonna be one of our heaviest lifts outside of hiring people, I'll keep the board and the community up to speed on that. I do want to remind the board that we have a live webpage on our website with all of the, the updates that we've had running from every meeting, every work session, we'll have all these details up there a- as well um, so that we are as transparent as we possibly can be with our community as to where we are. Any questions?
I, I would just like to say thank you for your detail in, in the, uh, the updates and, uh, not only in the updates but in the plan itself. Um, I think this is very helpful for our students, uh, and our staff and our community to, to really get a full, not only understanding but appreciation of all the pieces and moving parts in order to get to the service that, you know, our community deserves for our parents and, and our students. So, I truly appreciate all, all the work that you put into this, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much and I think it's been, I want to thank the board for, you know, when we set those goals out there, one of the things that we don't want to do, change is difficult and at this point, our community has settled into the current level of service. Our goal would be if we cha- if we are able to enhance that service by January, February at the latest, that that is the approach we are gonna take going into the, the next school year as well, so that we don't have to keep changing things.
Agreed.
Yeah, so, um, that's the goal, so I will keep the board updated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, alright, let me look, um, Mrs. Iyer, to make sure I didn't miss anything, that's all I have.
That's all you have, okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to treasurer celebrations and donations. I know, I'm coming. So, a little bit different setup tonight, so please see the screen for our donations and grants. So, as you can see, we are very fortunate to have many. So, doc, your donations and support make a difference for Finley City Schools and our sincerest thank you to each and every one of you. That's it? Uh, board celebrations.
I'd be happy to go.
Go ahead.
Start out with, um, our preschool and this is from Jackie Nelson and she says, "Preschool is celebrating our fall fest. We had families attend on Friday, October thirty-first of our costume parade, then a festival when all things fall. There were pumpkins, a train ride, cotton candy, face painting, leaf raking, and a picture station. A great time was had by all and we look forward to our next family event, which is our winter program on December eighteenth, uh, for our PM families. So, they're doing a wonderful job over there and these kids and families were having so much fun. So, I want to just congratulate them for, um, making school fun along with everything else that we do." And then also, and Mrs. Machesky, um, did an excellent job here starting off and I wish she was still here. Um, I just want to celebrate and, um, actually, Dr. Patton already took my, um, did I say Patton?
Did I steal your thunder about Veterans Day?
Did I just say Patton, Dr. Patton?
You did, you know, you're thinking of General Patton, Veterans Day, it's okay, yeah, it's alright.
No, uh, 'cause I just stole my thunder, but that's okay, you deserve to. Uh, anyways, it was a wonderful event, um, I just can't say enough about it, I've been gone several times over the years and, um, it's tradition and something they always do. Um, in addition to Mrs. Machesky, I know Deb Wickerham has done this for years, several years, I think she said twenty-eight maybe?
Yep, that's right.
Um, so, that's absolutely wonderful. Um, I want to thank Krista Kreitz Miller for, um, assisting, uh, actually, I got to do the welcome which was really, really fun and Krista gave me some, uh, ideas about things to do and so anyways, we issued a challenge and, um, and... And so anyways, we issued a challenge, and, um, and I appreciate that, Krista, so thank you. And, uh, one thing I want to mention too is, um, um, each class, um, had their songs that they sang, um, third grade, fourth grade, and then fifth grade, and I was just amazed. It really, they were really, really good. Um, and I'm sorry, that, what, does anyone know their, the choir director over there? I should have gotten that name. Katie Barrett. She, it was outstanding. And you know how when we're parents, you know, we go and like, it doesn't really matter if they're good or bad, you know, when they sing, because we, there are kids and they're great. But I just have to say, uh, it's one of the highest quality elementary programs that I've heard and how much, just, I mean, really spirit and, and pride they were putting into their songs. And, you know, had little props and things like that. So I just think that's wonderful. Um, uh, just, you know, just, a- again, that extra that we get, you know, at Finley City Schools, you know, the things that, that the kids learn and, you know, the history and the background and, you know, the availability of, um, in this case, the choir. So anyways, I want to celebrate that. So I think that's it for me.
Okay. Uh, from Donnell, Mrs. Tartabono shared this past week that the PBIS team celebrated, there were three hundred and seventy-six positive referrals so far this year versus a hundred and sixty at this point, uh, last year. So way to go, Donnell students for displaying responsible, respectful, and safe behaviors. Last week was School Psychologist Week, and Donnell would like to celebrate School Psychologist Amanda Byers, Amanda's professionalism, her ability to be the calm in the storm, her listening ear, and her advocacy of, of our many, some of the, her many qualities that make Amanda an excellent school psychologist. Thank you to Amanda. Last week also was the first orchestra and band concert of the year. Thank you to Mr. Pressle and Mrs. Wallach for their leadership. We are so proud of the musical traditions of excellence at Finley City Schools, and these students are working hard to continue that tradition. Also, thank you to the community for their continued support of the arts in the schools. I also have an additional celebration from Mrs. McChesky. Um, she shared with me that the Finley Fire Department came to eat lunch with the students that did not have family at the family picnic earlier this fall, and that they also stopped by last week, last week was a big week. Last week on all, on their own, Finley Fire stopped by on their own and asked to visit with students at lunch. So way to go to support our students, Finley Fire. That's great. On the athletics front, uh, congratulations to our football team for a great season. They made us proud of them both on and off the field. Congratulations also to Russell Stein the Fourth and Cam Steckshulte on their run in the state cross-country meet on November the first. So congratulations, guys, folks. Great fall season, very proud of our athletes and our performing arts kids as well.
That's right. Great.
All right, uh, Mrs. Stevenson at Wilson Vance would like to celebrate the hard work and dedication of the staff at Wilson Vance in their efforts to address behavioral in attendance. Uh, through their efforts, uh, Wilson Vance had zero out-of-school suspensions for the first, uh, part of the year. Uh, this achievement reflects their staff's commitment and proactive relationship-based supports that helped all the students succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. Uh, Mrs. Kopp at Glenwood would like to celebrate that on October thirty-first, Glenwood held its first building-wide first-quarter rewards day. Our students participated in, uh, competitions such as dodgeball tournaments, coloring contests, Jenga, and enjoyed movies in the classroom. Uh, we ended up the day with an assembly where the winning dodgeball team, eighth grade, uh, challenged our staff, and according to Mr. Nunez, it was the first time in his career that they lost to our students. So, uh, congratulations, eighth graders. Um, all in all, it was a fantastic day celebrating all their accomplishments and achievements, uh, over the first quarter. Um, there's an ac- academic addition. Uh, we had ninety-three merit honor rolls, all As and Bs, and two hundred and twenty distinguished honor roll students, all As for the first quarter. Uh, that makes fifty-seven percent of their students populated, um, they earned the honor roll. So that's a huge accomplishment, uh, for, uh, Glenwood, and congratulations. Well done. And that is all.
Uh, my daughter teaches at Glenwood, and she said that dodgeball was, it was, uh, quite the game. Yeah, she said, I stayed in the back row because they were winging some balls. Just, just to say, that was quite the deal.
They didn't gear it up for high school.
So I too was at Chamberlain Hill for the veterans, uh, program, as always, very touching. Um, and yeah, it was a very nice program. I know, I, I believe Bigelow Hill is having something tomorrow morning. Uh, there may be some other schools. I'm sorry, I don't know them all, but take a look around if you're looking to honor some veterans, as we always want to do, so. Um, and then, uh, football, you know, again, tough loss, great game, great season. Um, beautiful weather this year to go to the games, and I just, they need, I, I hope they're very proud of what they've done, and we are proud of them, so. Okay, uh, also attended Murders in the Air this weekend, the fall play. Um, enjoyed it, very good, um, and it was interactive. We got to be a part of the play in, in the audience by choosing who we thought the murderer was. So, uh, interesting. It was a very interesting play. Thank you to all the people involved in that. Um, it was very enjoyable. And then, uh, Turkeys for Trojans. Uh, that is coming up, and you can see the information there. If you are able and are willing and can, please consider a donation for this great program that will provide Thanksgiving meals for Finley City School families. So, uh, yeah, if you, if you're able, please try to help there. And that is all I have, so we will move on to committee reports.
Operations and facilities, just obviously, I gave a pretty detailed, uh, report under, on transportation. We had a, a wonderful meeting today, actually, also with the Donnell Foundation that helps us sustain our stadium, and we're forever grateful for the Donnell Foundation for that. Uh, Personnel and HR Committee, I do have a special update to the board. I want you to know that, um, we have at this time, I believe the number is twenty-nine, thirty-one known, um, positions that will be available for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Uh, I also was informed, uh, last week that there are school districts across the state, usually hiring season starts late winter, you get out ahead of, well, they're posting now for positions for next year. So we are going to be posting, as we did two years ago, it was a very successful process, our pool of, uh, jobs that will, you know, whether it's primary, intermediate, middle school, um, intervention specialists, uh, we actually still need a couple intervention specialists right now. But we are going to, uh, we already started today. I can say that, uh, Mrs. Kreitz Miller and Mrs. Reiman went down to Ohio State for a recruitment event. Today, we are going to get aggressive in terms of trying to hire and retain the best teachers for our school district, starting now. Uh, so I just wanted to put that on your radar. Did you have anything to add to that? Pool is open. Let's see. And, uh, really, that's it for the committee reports.
Okay, public participation. Is there any employee representatives? Is there any student representatives? And is there any parents or public that have any comments?
I don't believe anything was pulled up for tonight.
We will move on to the Board of Education consent items. Could I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
Okay. I can never remember when my turn is. All right, so, uh, I, I went over the calendar piece. Um, you'll see some things on there for overnight travels, such as We the People State Competition, uh, and then Fall Play and Soccer Camp Directors. So, um, just a few straightforward items on your consent items tonight.
Can you, one moment, can you?
Oh, yep. So on the, just specifying under your consent items, because there were three options on the spreadsheet, that it is option one that I'm asking you to adopt. And that's the one I spent time explaining very similar to this year's stuff. Yes, option one, tab one on the spreadsheet.
Any other discussion about that?
Ready?
Yep.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen L. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Okay. We are moving on to Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and HR. Could I have a motion to approve these items?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, um, point out a few things. One of the reasons I just mentioned that we have thirty-one positions already known, uh, and that's because some individuals have taken the opportunity to announce and, and submit for their retirement, uh, and you see those on the agenda. And I just want to press pause for a moment in our meeting to honor the sheer number of years and dedication to our school district. Uh, you can see twenty-five years, forty years of service, twenty-six years of service, thirty-two years of service, thirty years of service. Um, these are some amazing individuals who have given their entire career to Finley City Schools. And we're just very proud and honored and humbled at their service to our, to our students and their impact that they've had over the years. So, um, just really want to press pause and acknowledge that.
Yes, uh, some of these people are definitely friends, and, um, it's amazing, you know, we must have started when we were ten, so, um, they're, sorry to believe they put in so many years. But great teachers, great people, uh, big losses, big shoes to fill.
Enormous shoes to fill, and that's why we're starting now.
So yes, we need, we need to be recruiting and, um, filling these with really great, great folks to come behind them, um, because they are the people that make Finley City Schools what it is, and special.
And I'd like to echo as well both your comments. And, uh, just to say that they've been a gift to our students and to our community. Um, and they've made a huge impact, uh, not only on our community, but for our students. And, uh, that's a long-lasting gift that they've given and the, of their time and commitment to Finley City Schools, and it's truly appreciated.
The, uh, anybody else have any comments? The other thing that I wanted to point out that you'll be voting for on the, these consent items under Personnel and HR is that, um, I'm pleased to, uh, submit the name of Kayla Reiman for Director of Human Resources, um, to take effect on January first of twenty-twenty-six. Uh, Kayla brings a wealth of knowledge, as everyone knows. She's already doing an incredible job in terms of the transition with, uh, the retirement of Mrs. Kreitz Miller, which I still want to throw in the shredder. The, uh, but that, the, the, the learning that she's been able to do under Krista and alongside Krista, but also the wealth of knowledge that she brought to us from the private sector, um, i- has been tremendous. Uh, unfortunately, she couldn't be with us tonight. Um, also on the agenda this evening is the position for HR Generalist that I'm asking the board to put into effect immediately, uh, tomorrow. Uh, Lana Bres- I was, Bresgottner, um, will be leaving Pam's department so that, and then this means then Pam could then post for an individual on payroll. Um, I know that in terms of our path to progress and the Horizon work that we're going to be doing, uh, that I've talked about in the last couple meetings and that I update you on each week, it, I know that the board, part of that one component of that is the administrative structure that we're going to, you know, be proposing and having moving forward. Uh, I do want to just make clear and just remind you that I do not intend to backfill the, that Assistant Superintendency that is being vacated at this time by Mrs. Kreitz Miller. Um, that we're going to go with a Director, uh, that will report to me, um, starting in January, so.
Anything else? Okay, roll.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen L. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Okay, and. Okay, and then we, uh, need a, I need a motion for the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Consent Items.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion there?
The only thing I have in my notes, I'm just trying to click way too many tabs here right now. The, the blue crew, the, the one for that is paid for through a grant. And so I just want to, I always like to point that out when we have grant funding for some of these, uh, supplementals for that student council that's grant-funded, so just pointing that out.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen L. Wilson?
Aye.
So I need a motion for the, to approve the treasurer, uh, financial items.
So move.
Second.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go over our, our, I'll keep it brief. So, um, we, our finance committee, as you know, meets monthly. So the finance committee met on October thirty-first for finance, or we met actually last week. We changed it several times, so we ended up finally meeting on Friday, Thursday, Thursday or Friday. We met to go over the October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five financial statements. So the reports are on board docs. They were on, then they were off, but they are back on now. So please feel free to review them and email, and email me any questions or concerns. I have been getting several questions after the meeting, so, and I really, I really do not, um, I really mean, I want you to email me if you have any questions. I don't want there to be any discrepancy or things that you think are wrong. Please let me know, because, you know, I had several last, after last meeting that were just kind of misunderstandings, or they weren't reading the reports right, because they're a little bit, kind of, um, difficult to read sometimes. They're small, I get it, so. Please feel free to reach out to me. So as you see on the screen, our balance, we, we call this our balance of funds report, and I think it tells a lot. Um, some, some of the highlights we went over with, um, was our reconciliation of all funds was twenty-one million, eight forty-five, oh fifty-three, and it is on this report. As that was one of my questions I had, so if you look at, um, on our packet, the reconciliation sheet matches this report also. So again, it's kind of, um, ties it all together, but if you don't know what to look for, you don't really know where it's at. So the bottom on the reconciliation sheet is the ending balance at the bottom. That was a question I had after our meeting last time, was, did those two tie together? And yes, they do. So our monthly self-insurance report was reviewed and discussed. We had, we had a few budget transfers and a then-and-now, which is strictly if we get a purchase order that came in that we were unaware of, and then we have to do a then-and-now and ask permission to pay it. We did talk in great lengths about spring and summer camp payments and how we do those right now. And our suggestion from the committee is we need to review it, and it is noted that we need to put some processes in place. Maybe not policies, but maybe processes to assist all our staff and our people that want to host camps so that we're all on the same page and that, um, you know, we kind of all know going into it what that looks like. So in the near future, we'd like to start reviewing some procedures, not necessarily making a policy. So we did have a correction on our Communications Director's step that was inadvertently placed on step two, but it should be step, or step three, and it should be step two. We talked about that. We also are asking permission, um, to sign another contract with Rich and Gillis, and that's the group that does all our Board of Revision review for us. So like, if there's a dispute with our taxes, so I'd like, I, I'm very happy with them, as are the rest of the Finance Committee, and believe that they do a good job for us, and would like to sign the contract with them. So that's all I have on the finances for right now. Do you have anything else that I got? So, Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen L. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
But then I. Now it's time for the treasure takeaway.
Okay.
Straight from the treasure, Mrs. Harrington. So, question. Do you know why the U.S. Secret Service was originally formed?
Oh, I know this one. No.
Does anybody know?
Well, I think I might.
You think you do?
Well, you know, I do not.
Go right ahead.
Was it to track down fraud?
Yes.
I know.
The U.S. Secret Service was originally, now, I know you guys probably know this, we just didn't want to say. Was originally founded in eighteen sixty-five to combat rampant counterfeiting of currency following the Civil War. At that time, it was estimated that as much as one-third of the nation's currency was fake, and the agency's primary mission was to stabilize the country's financial system by suppressing counterfeiters. And we still do that. The role of protecting the president was added to its duties much later, after the assassination of President William Kinley in nineteen oh-one. Just a fun fiscal fact. And now we have some.
fun fiscal fact. And now, we have some students here that probably want to become a treasurer.
Please become a treasurer. We need more treasurers.
Start now.
Yeah, so they don't have to work forever.
Now, see, you're going to go home and say, "The best thing he learned about..." Go ahead, sorry.
Before you adjourn, just also, just a quick reminder, if you didn't see it in my update from Friday, we will, Pam and I will get you some dates for the January organizational meeting. I want to thank everyone that publicly ran for board and that shows their interest in Finley City Schools and that wants to support us, and I want to congratulate Mr. Cooper on his reelection, and Mrs. Height for who will be joining us in January. But we'll get the dates out to you all as soon as possible.
Yeah, and Mrs. Harrington, you didn't mention about this, this new report that we have to put on the website.
Oh, yep, sorry. I got too excited about my treasurer. Go ahead.
So, while, so while you're gathering your thoughts, there was another attachment on the treasurer's piece. It's a new report, but it's not a new expense. It's something that we do every year. It's grant-funded positions. We normally just don't have to have a report with the whole thing. So, it's not like we're hiring people or anything. No, no, no. It's the same people, it's the same funding, it's just a new way of reporting that. So, so, I'll let Mrs. Harrington.
It's just a requirement that we have to have, the board have a policy put on our website, that we are following the rules to pay the wellness and DPIA funds and track it. We always have, but now they would like to have a formal, that you all, that you all approve it, and that we put it on our website.
So, you won't have to take the questions from everyone?
Right.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not new spending.
No.
It is continuation of grant-funded people that we've had through, for years.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time.
Okay, it's just that there's now a report that documents it. That's it.
But I thought that was a really good question after the last meeting, is why does that report go with the cash reconciliation? Because it's hard to tie it together. So, thank you for that, because you know, I probably do have some interested viewer at home wanting to know what that is.
Yes, and thank you.
Yes, I did forget that.
It's very transparent. Thank you. Okay, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
And third.
Okay, Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
And Dr. Stephen Al Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.